All right, good evening. We're gonna start the March 28th Planning Commission Agenda. Please stand for the flag.
For the flag of the United States of America.
Mr. Bennie, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Everett?
Press it, push it out.
There you go, now you're good.
All right, Mr. Everett. Ms. Leschuk?
Present.
Mr. Henderson?
Present.
Mr. Bennie's present, Chairman Haney?
Present.
All right, your full gen- full board.
All right. We'll start off with item number one, John Fair, 140 Falls in Tullie Town Road, TMP number 13-013-005 for a minor subdivision of a future residence.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Heath Dumack, Dumack Engineering here representing Mr. Fair, Mr. and Mrs. Fair in a minor subdivision of their existing home lot. Bear with me for 30 seconds, I can set up the eagle. The site originally had a home built on it by Mr. and Mrs. Fair approximately 12 to 13 years ago. At this point, they would like to spin off that building and the building lot and sell that parcel to his son and their family. I believe they are working in the family business and Mr. Fair wanted to help out the family and have them close at hand to his business. We have the review letters from the Traffic Engineer Remington and Vernick as well as the review letter from Jones Engineering. If you'd like, we can go over both letters. I'm sorry, we also have the Bucks County Planning Commission. We can go over all three letters, but everything on all the letters is a will comply.
Yeah, just from Jones Engineering, if you go over that letter and whatever you're gonna ask for a waiver.
Absolutely. We actually don't have any waivers as part of their review letter, but looking at the letter, the zoning ordinance, that's a comment, 209-12B. Going into the subdivision land development ordinance, oh, my apologies, we do have a waiver, which is we're requesting preliminary as final approval because of the nature, the diminutinous nature of the project. Instead of doing preliminary and then coming back for final, we would like to ask for preliminary as final with one approval. The retaining wall along the water's edge will be removed on the encroachment. Next item, applicant must verify that all utilities to the residence are located on the proposed lot, that is a will comply. Meets and bounds for the proposed lot must be submitted to the township review, that's a will comply. Record plan is a will comply. Building setback lines is a will comply and erosion and control, sediment control measures is also a will comply.
I just, I have to ask one question. Why you tear down the garage?
That's a really good question and I have quite honestly fought back because from what I understand, that's a really nice garage. The answer is that's what the client wants to do.
And is the future plans to construct another home on the property? Is that alluded to, on one of these letters, it alluded to the future?
That is, that is correct. At some point, they will be coming back in for a plot plan for building from it.
The only other question I had is, there was a comment in the Bucks County Planning Commission's letter about the minimum lot size area. And is there 15,000 square feet of land there? I know the lot's larger than 15,000 square feet, but the minimum lot areas for this particular zoning is 15,000 square feet and I know a large portion of the lot includes the lake.
I believe it is, however, we will double check that to make sure that it's a will comply.
All right, great. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board? Any public comment? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve preliminary and final for John Fair, 140 Falls in Tullie Town Road, Love Town, PA 19054, tax not parcel 13-013-005, is owned LR. And will comply with the letters from the Bucks County Planning Commission and Jones Engineering.
And the Traffic Engineer?
And the Traffic Engineer.
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Mr. Bennie, please call the board.
Ms. Leschuk?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bennie's a yes. Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Haney?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right, I'll move on to item number two, Pensbury Plaza redevelopment, 223 to 229 Plaza Boulevard, TMP number 13-028-028.001 and number 13-028-029-001, currently zoned SC. Preliminary and final land development, removable portion of existing structure, construction of a new 10,500 square foot retail building with associated parking lot modifications.
Good evening, my name is Mike Peters. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Eastburn and Gray representing ARD Pensbury LP. This is an existing shopping center, the Pensbury Plaza Shopping Center. The proposal is to demolish a small part of the center as shown on the plan to construct a 10,500 square foot unit to reorient the parking slightly and to actually reduce the amount of impervious coverage that exists on the property. As part of that, we have received review letters from Jones Engineering, from the Bucks County Planning Commission and from RVE. I'll note that they are all will comply, but first I'll ask our engineer CJ Bach to just briefly explain in a bit more detail what we're proposing to do here and then I think we can pretty quickly run through those review letters. So CJ, if you could, please.
Hello, CJ Bach with Land Corps Engineering. As already elaborated, the proposal is to demolish a portion of the existing building, approximately 6,800 square feet of it, and replace it with an infill of a 10,500 square foot Dollar Tree. The portion of the existing building to remain does currently have a second story that is proposed to be converted into attic space or storage. So it will be taken out of our site gross floor area. Some minor parking lot modifications in front of the proposed improvements to add some green space and improve the safety and circulation. There is a nominal increase in the gross floor area in Falls Township, but overall, there's a reduction in the gross floor area as noted based on the attic conversion. The, the project currently has approved variances from the zoning hearing board to permit the building separation of 16.3 feet and to allow for the 194 spaces and the required 358. That's really just kind of a function of the way the site is bifurcated between Morrisville and Falls Township and the way we calculate spaces and area in one township and present the calculations in a certain way. Site wide, given the total parking spaces provided, it's very close to actually just meeting the ordinance, either ordinance for either township. But the calculations are a little messy as the municipal boundary bifurcates the lot. Pretty much the extent of it, if anybody has any questions about the proposal.
So it looks like this is the old Pensbury Theater?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
We are requesting two waivers, preliminary final and to use an aerial to supplement the 200-foot features requirement.
Questions from the board?
I have a question for Mr. Wheat. On the review letter, it says, there's a comment about storm, storm sewers going under the building. I didn't see any. Is that a, did you tell me where that is?
The, the clogged storm sewers?
No, there was a comment that said the storm sewers can't go under the building. I'm, I'm asking, is that a typo or is that actually an existing condition or proposed condition?
Okay, maybe.
I believe he's talking about comment, it's the second one under stormwater. I think you were just noting that they shouldn't be under the building. The requirement, the common is to provide profiles on the storm pipes and to that extent, we'll certainly comply.
Okay, so it does, that situation doesn't exist?
No.
Okay, we not propose storm pipes under buildings.
And to clarify, that, that last sentence could have been left off the comment.
It's a, it's a good advisory.
Can you just go over the waivers, statum from Jones Engineering, just to?
Yeah, so there are, we were able to in, in working with Jones Engineering to come down, that's why we brought a new waiver letter this evening to just two waivers, one preliminary and final and the other to permit use of an aerial for features within 200 feet of the site. We had requested several waivers with respect to stormwater and the way we're gonna handle that is work directly with Jones Engineering to satisfy them that we are in a compliant and/or exempt position, which means the waivers are no longer required. So we're just down to two.
Typically, we'll grant a partial waiver for the 200-foot if the applicant agrees to provide whatever necessary information this Jones Engineering needs to evaluate the project.
We're, we're happy to comply with that condition.
All right, any other board comment? Any public comment? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for the preliminary and final land development application of Pensbury Plaza redevelopment, TMP number, your buildings 223 through 229 Plaza Boulevard, TMP number 13-028-2028.001. Let's see, with waivers, or based on the Jones Engineering letter dated March 17th, 2023, and the Remington and Vernick Engineering letter dated February 2nd, 2023, with waivers of 191-8B and 191-78.C2.
I'll second it.
Mr. Bennie, please call the board.
Ms. Leschuk?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Bennie's a yes. Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Haney?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a good evening. All right, we'll move on to item number three, Britton Realty, excuse me, Realty Morrisville LLC, 835 West Bridge Street, TMP number 13-028-081, zoned HC. Waiver land development and allocation of space to create two lease areas on the parcel.
Good evening, Mike McGinnis here on behalf of Britton Industries. I have Mr. Heath Dumack with me and Dan Carr as well on behalf of Britton tonight. This is an application for an allocation of space. The property is located at 835 West Bridge Street and the tax parcel is 13-28-81. The site is currently owned and operated by the Elks Lodge. Britton Industries is the equitable owner of the property. We appeared at the zoning hearing board a couple of months ago to receive relief, to have Britton occupy what I'm labeling as the rear of the property and Heath, just if you can quickly point out, the rear of the property really means two things in this instance. Would include a, the creation of a warehousing space that is approximately 5,400 square feet that would be divided via a party wall and then there would be outside storage which would be blocked off from the streetscape by a privacy fence. When I say outside storage, I think with Britton, I know we've appeared in front of the planning commission multiple times, I want to be clear, this is not outside storage of raw material. There is no raw material associated with this. This is outside storage of equipment and trailers that will be completely screened and non-visible from the road. This arrangement was reached with the Elks so that the Elks can remain in the portion of the property which fronts Bridge Street, which is approximately 6,435 square feet of space with their existing club. Britton will be leasing that back to them in perpetuity for a dollar. So the arrangement made sense on Britton's end because they're outgrowing their current space on my lane and this is a necessity for Britton and it also allows the Elks to remain successful and involved in the community moving forward here. As I indicated, the exterior of the site and the storage area is going to be fully screened. The only site work associated with the project is the installation of the privacy fence and then the creation of one ADA accessible space. There is no impact whatsoever in terms of parking or traffic as was testified to with the zoning hearing board. There are no employees who would be permanently stationed at this site. There is only approximately one or two trips per week which are estimated to utilize the site regarding the materials which are being stored. There is no functional impact and the storage of the materials to the inside and the warehousing space is going to be non-gas related equipment for Britton, non-flammable, dry storage. So again, even to the interior, we're not talking about any raw materials, nothing hazardous, nothing flammable, just essentially warehousing space. Again, we think this is, it's a convenient and a positive arrangement both for the current owner and the future owner on this location. All of our waivers relate to the fact that we're proposing no site work and we can go through those momentarily, but you're gonna see as part of the waiver request, we're essentially asking for the maintenance of existing non-conforming conditions on the property. Otherwise, there, as I indicated, there, there's nothing else proposed on the site. I do have a, an aerial, if anyone's not familiar with the property, that I can distribute so you could get a better understanding of the existing conditions on the property if the planning commission would like.
So, the proposed outdoor storage area is basically what they're gonna use, they're using it for now. Cause when you drive by there now, there's tractor trailers all back there.
Not at the Elks.
Behind the Elks. I drove by there last night for my son's, pick him up from school.
You're probably?
No, it's behind the, they have them behind the Elks right now. If you pass the gym and there's tractor trailers behind the Elks.
Hi, Dan Carr, Vice President, Britton Industries. Yes, so our tractor trailers parked back there right now would be similar storage.
Okay.
And, and those trucks aren't used on a daily basis? They're just parked there to store if there's only gonna be one trip a week?
Yeah, those are units we're not using on a daily basis. There are no power units, it's simply trailers. So I don't think we've been in there probably in the last three weeks to do anything.
Now, the storage is just gonna be for trailers? It's not gonna be for any other equipment?
We had it labeled at the ZHB as equipment slash trailer storage. That is candor and if, Dan, if there's any-
Right now, there's only trailers back there. We really envision anything else going back in that area. It's not a real big area and right now, we're filling it with unused trailers. They're not, they're not off the road or anything. There's ones that we don't currently need, you know, seasonally.
And the new warehouse, that's just gonna be butt up right against to the existing Elks?
It's already there.
That's already there?
It's there. There's no site work. It's basically installing a party wall in the existing structure.
Oh, okay.
The front, yeah, the front 6,400 would remain for the Elks and then Britton would take the rear 5,400.
Understood, thank you. Oh, gotcha. Yeah, makes sense.
Was there any conditions from the zoning board that restricts the use of that storage area to trucks or vehicles that restricts it from being raw material?
No, not that I recall. We volunteered a condition of, well, one, one thing that we volunteered at the end of the presentation, although I don't, I don't recall there being actually any questions from the board on this, was that Britton is going to utilize this themselves. I know this is a concern, you know, in Falls and other places in Lower Bucks, that it's not, you have the approval, the allocation of space, now Britton's gonna turn around and lease that to some third party for parking. It will specifically be related to Britton. And another thing that I noted, I'm sure we'd be happy as a condition, would be no material storage. So you're not gonna see driving by mulch piles or anything at this location. In terms of any further discussion regarding the nature of equipment or trailer storage, I don't recall that being discussed.
And they'll be utilizing the leased parking space for the Elks for when they park and utilize that building?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the Highway Commercial District allows for multiple uses on the same property, but it also requires that the applicants demonstrate that both uses can stand by on their own as far as meeting the requirements of the HC zoning district as far as areas, frontages, street setbacks and such. And the one lease area clearly can't do that. Did you grant, were you granted a variance from that also?
The relief that we received. We received, I believe, a variance to, from 209-23B to permit a warehouse use in the Highway Commercial District and also to permit outside storage, 209-42H-22A to not require parking areas to be paved with dust-free all-weather surface. A variance from 209-42H-7 and 22 to permit 50 parking spaces instead of the required 57 with the use. There wasn't anything that was sought relating to frontage.
Well, the, the section that I'm referring to is Section H that says that one, one or more, any principal building contain one or more principal permitted uses and/or organizations. Any lot may contain more than one permitted building provided that each principal building is located in a manner which will allow the possibility of subdividing lot in a manner that each structure and resulting lot would conform with the zoning.
I mean, I would think the argument in response to that is we're taking one structure. It's not two separate buildings. I don't, I don't know if technically, I mean, I defer to, to Matt on that and certainly if, if he thinks that we need to go to the zoning hearing board again to clean that up prior to proceeding with the supervisors, we're happy to do that. But I think that would be the argument in response is we're not creating a separate standalone building. It's, it's one building on site that just happens to have a, a party wall.
And internally, so I'm assuming it was the old catering hall, it has zone restrooms and plumbing and stuff?
Yes. So, Brian, I'm fine with it as a, a condition to, you know, discuss that with the township and if it's needed, obviously to procure that. It's gonna be the exact same plan that the ZHB approved.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes. On the Traffic Engineers Report, it says that the driveway's 23 feet when it should be 25. Are you guys gonna address that?
We're asking for a waiver.
Heath, could you use the microphone, please?
We are asking for a waiver from that aspect. It's part of the waiver request letter that was issued around lunchtime today.
All right, why is it you can't widen it by two feet? I mean, when it's the Elks Lodge, it's, you know, it's 90% cars, pickup trucks, whatever. But now with, you're having tractor trailers going in and out, I mean, extra two feet. I mean, it helps.
Generally, I would agree with you. In this instance, the two uses truly are complementary. Any tractor trailer movement would be during the day and the Elks Lodge is used at night. So the reality is that parking lot is pretty much 95 to 99% empty during the day.
Okay.
And the, the lease area that the equipment's gonna be screened by fences, you said, was against? And so it'll be defined and it won't spread?
That's correct. If you if you look at the, if you're familiar with the existing aerial, essentially where the back, I can come up with, I'm sorry, for a second here.
My architectural rendering with my one blue line that gets drawn down. The edge of the building at the corner is essentially where the fence is gonna go and the trailers are here. So they're not gonna be visible and they, of course, at that point can't spread because Britton wouldn't have the permission.
And you're just putting one fence here from basically fence to the building? You're not gonna close anything else where they have their horse chute pits and all?
The whole rear, sorry.
The question that was just asked is I discussed how we're, we're putting a fence that splits the parking area from where the trailers are. Is there, is the fence on the rear of the site gonna be fully enclosed or is it just shielding?
It was meant as a privacy fence. So it was meant to be across there and we could install one there too if that's required.
Basically, if, if the- Basically, if, if the, if the township would like, we're fine to do that.
Yeah, are they still going to utilize, is the club still going to utilize the horseshoe pits and, and those things? So, I would, I mean, kind of cut that off from the lease building back, I think would be good to do that.
I think that's fine with us, yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any public comment?
Hi, I'm Donna Wolf and I am from the Elks Lodge and we are in negotiations with the Britton Industries, Britton Realty to have them purchase the property. My concern is the two, creation of two leases. We're the only lease, so I'm not quite sure where the other lease comes in at this point in time since Britton will retain the back portion of, of the actual building.
Yes, please.
Sounds like a mic question.
Yeah.
The term for, in this instance, a lease area?
Can you speak into my microphone?
The term lease area in this instance is also very specific for land development. If we have more than one use on the property, Falls Township's land development ordinance does require a lease area plan to show where the different users are on the property and it's considered a land development, which is why we're here this evening. So, lease area, there's only going to be one lease, which is realistically the Elks, leasing back from Britton.
There's not a separate tenant, if that was not clear. It's just the Elks and Britton.
And it, I was just concerned about that because that was our intention the whole time and I just thought maybe it was for future if Britton did not want to continue having that as a warehouse at their part. I have an obligation to the membership to report back since we are the trustees and I certainly didn't want to have to go before them and tell them we have another tenant moving in. So, this is, this is reassuring to me and then I can reassure our membership that what we have intended on having happen will definitely be. So, thank you very much.
And Mr. McGinnis did make that clear in the beginning that, that would have been a major concern for me personally, yeah.
Right. It's just an allocation of space application to split between Elks and Britton. Britton is not going to be leasing any portion of this to a third party and we're fine with that as a condition.
And it was good to hear that in testimony, so we're reassured with that. But thank you very much and we are definitely approving of, of him getting anything he needs to make this contract go through. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, with that, I'll take your motion.
Did we go through the waivers?
No, we didn't, didn't we? Yeah, just bring out the waivers.
Do you want to?
Just go through the waivers.
Waivers, yeah.
Just so we know what we're...
Yep.
Bring it up.
Certainly. So, we have a waiver request to allow preliminary final in tandem. There is a waiver request. Everything else I'm about to go through essentially is maintenance of existing conditions. So, 19134E to allow for the existing non-conforming condition regarding the street curb intersection. 19137 and 19136D to allow the existing parking configuration to basically be ratified as an existing nonconformity on site. 19138 to allow for non-modification of lighting that is presently in existence on the property. 19139 and 19161 to not require sidewalks. 19148 and 19171 require, requiring a waiver for not submitting a landscaping plan. 19178C2 regarding existing features and to submit an aerial photograph regarding the site conditions. 19178D21 to not require a traffic impact study and then 19180C1 regarding the drawing scale are waivers.
Did, I'm trying, did Remington Vernick recommend any traffic impact study? I didn't think they did. I thought they asked for just a summary of the parking requirements.
Yeah. Let me flip RVs.
Trip generation data.
Yeah, trip gen data rather than TIS.
Okay.
So, whether that's a technical waiver or not, I'll defer to the township.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for, to grant the waiver request for, um, Britton, for Britton Realty, Marsville LLC 835 West Bridge Street, Marsville, PA 19067, tax add parcel 13-028-081, Zone For the current waivers for Section 191, 8B, 19134E, 19137 and 19136D, 19138, 19139 and And then to be in compliance with Jones Engineering, the traffic study and Bucks County Planning Commission letters as well.
All will comply.
And also to be the only other tenant not leased to a third party.
Yes.
As a condition?
Yes.
I'll second. Just any poll of board, please.
Ms. Leschek?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Benniz, yes. Mr. Haney?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night. All right, we'll move on to item number four. Gelest Inc., proposed facility expansion, Phase Three, 11 Steel Road East, TMP number 13047-152, Zone HI. Preliminary final land development, Phase Three work contemplated in previous Gelest applications with some minor layout changes.
Mike McGinnis here on behalf of Gelest. I also have Eric Britz with me from Bowler Engineering and Ryan Wu here from Gelest tonight. As you just indicated, Mr. Haney, we are here for Phase Three of Gelest proposed development at the subject property, which is tax parcel 13-47-152, located at 11 East Steel Road. The property is owned heavy industrial and for anyone who is unaware of Gelest's operation, Ryan will get into this more momentarily. Gelest is a group company of Mitsubishi Chemical. They are a chemical manufacturer who serves a wide variety of industries, including healthcare, personal care and microelectronics. Our proposal tonight is the construction of a manufacturing building, which is just under 17,000 square feet in footprint and a 3,500 square foot support building. We also have associated parking and stormwater management improvements. We covered this briefly for the zoning hearing board to orient the planning commission. If anyone is unaware of this, some planning commission members may recall that Gelest initially appeared before the township approximately a decade ago with their overall development plan. This was in 2013 and it was a three-phase development which was proposed. Phase Two and Three only sought and secured preliminary approvals. Gelest secured the approvals for Phase One. They moved forward with the construction of Phase One on the site. Gelest then moved forward with final approval for Phase Two. However, because of the proximity between this application and the original preliminary approval for Phase Three of the development, the preliminary approval expired, which required us to resubmit for both preliminary and final approval for Phase Three. The reason why we appeared at the zoning hearing board with the application was even though the zoning was compliant back in 2013, when this was originally approved preliminarily, some of the characteristics in the heavy industrial district were modified by the township, particularly with respect to impervious surface and parking ratios. So, we had to go to the zoning hearing board, even though the plan that's in front of you this evening and the plan that was in front of the zoning hearing board is substantially similar, to get ratification of the new zoning standards in the township in the HI district. I will note at the outset that there are approximately 26 jobs which would be added to this site with the approval and construction of Phase Three. Presently, believe there are two shifts that Gelest operates. One has approximately 149 employees and the other one has 42 employees. We have certainly sufficient parking. This is not a publicly accessible site that is highly trafficked. Phase Three, as I indicated, and maybe Eric can cover briefly in a second, is substantially similar to what was previously approved and we do have already our MPDS permitting in hand. So, what I would like to do is have Mr. Britz go over the site plan, have Ryan Wu discuss a bit about who Gelest is and then cover our waivers. I will note that the only waiver that we're seeking tonight that was not procured previously is preliminary final in tandem. So, the rest of our waivers are still discussed with the planning commission or waivers which were previously sought and secured with the prior iteration of Phase Three. Thank you and I'll turn it over to you, Eric.
So, as Mike noted, this is Phase Three of an overall campus. It's been here for quite some time. It was previously approved in very similar nature as to what it, what's shown today. The most significant difference or differences are that the larger building grew by just over 100 square feet and shifted about five feet to the north to allow for that growth. And the basin that's proposed on the, on the west end of the site, showing that here in blue, grew to be able to meet the latest stormwater regulations mandated by the state. Beyond that, it's really almost exactly the same as what it was when it was approved in 2014.
Everyone, I'm Brian Wu, I'm a project manager for Gelest. Just a brief overview about the company. So, we've been around since 1991. I personally have not. I joined in January. We were acquired in, by Mitsubishi Chemical in 2020, really to become part of a, a larger chemical company structure, being able to use their EHS, environmental health and safety resources, overall corporate strategy to help us grow as a business. We are a specialty chemical company, so rather than making things like gasoline or fertilizer, we're making small batches of, of advanced chemistry, particularly to do with silicones, silicon and silanes, which go into products like waterproofing, coatings for, for jackets, stuff like that, as well as contact lenses. So, if you, if you wear contact lenses, you probably use a product that was made by Gelest. We also specialize in metal organic chemistries that has applications pharmaceutical for drug formulations, as well as microelectronics for, for making chips. We're really excited about this expansion. It, it's going to be a state-of-the-art facility. It's going to have the, the latest technology with regarding to, to safety and, and production and quality. We're really excited about the growth opportunities it brings us, the 26 additional jobs at the outset, as well as a, a modernization of the overall site.
Happy to answer any operational or engineering questions. I will note, I believe that the previously identified stormwater management waivers, I, I don't believe are necessary any longer through consultation with Mr. Jones's office, which leaves us with, I think it's five Sado waivers, four of which were previously, again, acquired when this was before the, the board in its original iteration.
The plans say that this building nine is a proposed future. Is that going to be built with this phase or is that going to be built...
Yeah, they'll be constructed in conjunction. It's going to be like a office building and a locker room for the, the guys to get changed in.
Any other questions from the board? Any public comment? All right, we can go over the waivers.
We have a waiver at the outset for preliminary final to be considered in tandem, hopefully to avoid the issue we ran into with the initial approval of this project. A partial waiver from 19137 regarding curbing for all parking facilities because of the, the stormwater BMPs and the sheet flow. We have a waiver from 19144D regarding grading within five feet of a property or right-of-way line. I don't know, Eric, if you could just briefly highlight where that is on the site?
Sure. It's all along the northern property line, which is actually, the, the property to the north of this is also owned by Gelest.
We have, I'll, I'll cover the, the simple one first, which is an existing features waiver from 19178C2 requesting usage of an aerial photograph. And then we have a waiver request from 19145, which is technically a waiver from the requirement that no permanent structure be permitted within the area of an easement. This is a, a rail easement. The rail line isn't present. The construction is on grade. We don't think this will ever be a, a problem. It was granted previously, but even if it was, the, the tank could be relocated at a later date. So, that's the technical reason. It's probably a title item that should probably be cleaned up at some point on the site.
And what, does that refer to the storm sewer outfall in the railroad easement in the upper right-hand, left-hand corner?
No, that, that particular waiver does not, but the, the other waivers that we're dropping, as, as Mike had noted, were, one of them was regarding the outfall of, of the basin. All those waivers were requested and dropped because everything, all the waivers that are being requested were specific to properties of that basin that have already been constructed per prior waivers received.
Can you, can you show where the tank pad is, Eric, with the rail?
It's right in the middle of the site and the rail easement comes through, through this location and obviously there's no rails there today.
Okay. The one thing I'll just ask is that make sure we work hand in hand with the fire marshal. I know with the chemicals and the hazards there. Richie said he still is waking up some plans from, from y'all, so just want to make sure with the fire hydrants and the potential risks there that we work with, with Rich in the fire department, or fire marshal, thank you.
Of course, happy to.
Any other questions, comments? All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for the preliminary and final land development application, Phase Three, Gelest Inc., 11th Steel Road East, TMP number 13-047-152, based on the Jones Engineering Associates Letter dated March 22, 2023, and the Remington Vernick Engineering Letter dated February 2nd, 2023, with waivers of 191.18.1, 191-37B, 191-44D, 191 dash, or point 45C, 191-78C2, 187-12E, 187-12H, 187-1212, 187, oh, 12, 12I.
Everything that's 187, we would, we withdrew.
Oh, okay. I beg your pardon. All right, so then, all of those, all right, so then those will all, you'll be working together.
Correct.
Okay, to make that happen. And once again, as long as you work with the fire marshal too on everything.
I'll second. Oh, I'll second. Mr. Benniz, poll the board.
Ms. Leschek?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Benniz, yes. Mr. Haney?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night. All right, we'll finish with item...
Mr. Evert?
Yes.
Mr. Binni, yes. Mr. Haney?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night. All right, we'll finish with item number five, approval of the minutes, February 28, 2023. Any additions, subtractions, issues with the minutes as printed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye abstain. All right, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So be it.
So be it. Have a good night, everyone. Bye.